It is now 7:30 on the 30th of July 2019. Thank all of you for coming here this evening. We had some issues that were going on over this special meeting that was called by Mayor Puzio with regard to having, today being the selection of this meeting date and time as well. We also received, the council received a copy of a submitted complaint that was submitted today and also has a preliminary hearing for Friday concerning the conduct and notice of this meeting. The allegations that are in this brief of this complaint, in addition to a letter that is openly provided for disclosure for the public, it's gonna read as the following. It's beginning at 5:45 PM.
Microphone working?
I would like to know if we're being filmed from the dais.
You are.
But I think that should be announced, everybody's aware.
You're being filmed?
I know, that's understood.
Mr. Yachafano's done in the past. It's been okay by the courts.
It has. If I may, we have here July 30th, 2019, an email that I received at 5:45 PM. And it's a reference into Mayor Michael Puzio versus the Township of Rockaway, County Council President, docket number MRS-L370-19.
Can you use the microphone, please?
I am turning it on, it's gonna go off automatically.
Dear Council President Tucker, I am writing concerning the special meeting of the Township Council purportedly called by Mayor Puzio tonight. Minutes ago, I was informed that an order to show cause has been filed by plaintiff Schmidt, and an emergency hearing set down to take place this Friday regarding Schmidt's claim that the special meeting for tonight has been noticed in violation of OTMA. My independent understanding of the facts alleged by Mr. Schmidt convinced me that this and his claims is more than merely a colorable one, which might explain the unusual occurrence of Judge Minkiewicz's decision to have an expedited hearing this Friday. Based on the foregoing, the town council should not permit the meeting to proceed, rather no business should be heard, and therefore should not, should be announced to the developments regarding Mr. Schmidt's new case followed immediately by an adjournment. No meeting should be convened. Problem that we have here is that there's also a subsection under NJSA 10:4-19 of a specific individual or individuals requesting notice for special meetings, regular meetings of any such. And going through the records, apparently that is something that did not take place, and it would be in violation of that portion of the act, as well as in the complaint, it says that the notice itself that was submitted out to the papers did not have the adequate amount of information moving forward. The other concerns that we've had is that we have a counterclaims and claims between the council, council president and the mayor with regard to the Faulkner Act and certain legislative and executive powers. And even under that act, under 4069A36G, the mayor does not have the right or the lawful ability to call the time and place for the meeting, which he had already done. And it's not in the code, you can read the Faulkner Act, it's on there. Thank you. So with all that being said, I am aware that the clerk had submitted the complaint over to Mr. Yachafano to show the concerns and the notice. There was also, I believe, Mr. Yachafano was going to review that. Mr. Yachafano, did you have the ability to review the complaint that was filed today?
May I ask a question, Council President? You read a letter to the assembled people tonight, as well as to the members of the council. Can you tell us first who authored that letter that you were reading?
I'm sorry, Mr. Deninger.
The attorney for the council minority, is that the same person?
There's no such thing as the minority, but it's for the council, yes.
Okay. And did Mr. Deninger send that letter to anyone else other than you?
I believe the vice president as well to send out to each council member.
I just got it, walked down the door, I made copies, I gave one to Christina Clipperton and one to the council president, so I just got this, and it says for public disclosure.
Did he forward that to anyone else? Is the letter copied to anyone else?
I'm not aware of that, Mr. Yachafano.
I didn't receive.
Okay.
I did not receive, I didn't...
You are aware, Council President, that section 2-5.3 gives the mayor, as to you, by the way, gives either the mayor or yourself the right to call a special meeting. I know that the letter from Mr. Deninger refers to an emergency meeting. This is not an emergency meeting. This is a special council meeting called with full and appropriate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Mr. Yachafano, so the information that you received with regard to what was in the brief and the complaint that was submitted today with the preliminary hearing for Friday, you reviewed it, and there's speculation and alleging that there's violation of OTMA. Are you telling us to proceed even though there could be a lawful violation of OTMA?
Mr. Kelly, I have...
Simple question, Mr. Yachafano.
No, Mr. Kelly, you're not gonna cross-examine me.
I'm not.
You're not gonna control my answer.
I'm not, I'm asking a simple question.
You're gonna get an answer, whether or not it's the answer you might want.
Mr. Yachafano, you would ask me several questions?
Why are you all clapping? He answered, he asked you a nice question. You're the one who's being...
I don't think so.
Mr. Yachafano, are you saying that the council can move forward even though there's alleged violation of OTMA?
I have discussed the case with the cases, I should say, in this particular case, which, by the way, you represented as being filed by Mr. Schmidt. In fact, it's been filed by Mr. Schmidt, Councilwoman Abrahamsen, and Mary Hollenbeck.
Mr. Yachafano, could I just have an answer to the question, please?
I've read the case that has been filed, I've discussed it with my partner Carl Perone, I've discussed it with the mayor, the mayor has elected to proceed with the meeting based upon our advice.
That would be correct. Unfortunately, since I preside as the council president of this meeting, I disagree with that respectfully, Mr. Yachafano.
Are you telling us you're not gonna permit the meeting go forward?
That's correct, Mr. Yachafano.
You don't have that authority.
I do.
No, you don't.
I do.
Town go forward.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
I'm here for you guys, unfortunately we're having a meeting.
Council President, there is a council of nine. Remember that.
I understand that.
Obviously you don't.
So, Mr. Freelandr, at one particular time, when you had a concern about an illegal meeting, I am not going to have a meeting taking place that is potentially unlawful.
That's your opinion.
Well, for some reason, we've had an emergent date for this to be heard on Friday.
It's not an emergent meeting, Mr. Kelly.
I would like the meeting to move forward.
Well, you know what, Mr. Mayor, you are a guest of the meeting, and you don't make that decision or call on that after the code.
No, in fact, Mr. Kelly, it is the mayor's meeting. The mayor, under our administrative code, has the power to and has called the meeting. It is his agenda and his meeting.
It's not his meeting, and unfortunately, we are not going to have a meeting because it's illegal to have this meeting because of the potential violations of OTMA.
Mr. Kelly, if...
The meeting hasn't even conveyed, hasn't commenced, and it will not commence.
You have to convey the meeting.
No, I do not.
Since you have frequently referred to Robert's Rules of Order in rulings you have made over the course of your tenuous counsel...
Mr. Yachafano, I'm not gonna argue with you. I've made the decision, and we're gonna move forward. What we have here, what we have here tonight...
You're saying you're unilaterally not permitting the meeting?
We're not going, I am not going to have the meeting commence because of the illegals.
I would like the meeting to proceed. Let's proceed with the meeting. If you're not happy with the meeting, you can have Councilman Quinn lead the meeting tonight.
Mr. Yachafano, I'd like a ruling, I'd like to declare the chair vacant. If the, if the president of council is not willing to do the bidding of the council...
You don't have a meeting to even make a motion.
Let's vote on a new council president, the chair's vacant.
And make a motion, there's not even a meeting to make a motion.
Time to remove the council president from his seat.
Under Robert's Rules of Order, Section 62, the 11th Edition, if the chair fails to act in accordance with the assembly's decisions on any point, or otherwise culpably fails to perform the duties of the chair properly in a meeting, the assembly may employ measures temporarily to replace the chair with another presiding officer expected to act in accordance with the will of the assembly. Mr. Kelly, I'm telling you, you cannot refuse to conduct this meeting without pulling the council and a motion permitting you to do so. Otherwise, you are obligated to conduct the meeting as per the agenda.
Mr. Yachafano...
If you refuse to conduct the meeting, any member of the council can make a motion upon second to declare the chair vacant and to replace you with a temporary presiding officer.
Mr. Yachafano, under rules and procedure meetings of the council, 251, that you're trying to change, questions of order, method of organization, and the conduct of business of the Rockaway Township shall be determined by the council president, who at his discretion may choose to have any matter and issue concerning question of order, method of organization, and the conduct of business determined by a majority vote of the council. Robert rules, may, Robert rules of order may be consulted for general guidance to aid in the disposition of resolution of any issue. However, Robert's Rules of Order shall not have any binding effect on any matter or issue before the Township Council.
Are you saying, Mr. Kelly, that that provision of the administrative code which you does, which you just read, gives you the right individually to declare a meeting of the council canceled?
I'm not, I'm not. And Mr. Yachafano...
With all due respect, Council President...
You're losing your seat, so just leave.
Please.
It's our town, it's correct.
Not your town, you're losing your seat, so just leave.
With all due respect, Council President, I would like to address Mr. Yachafano.
Two years in your game, you've done nothing but cost us money.
Excuse me, excuse me.
You need to be excused.
Mrs. Matos, Officer Matos.
Officer Matos, I can't conduct business here, I'm being interrupted.
That's right, there is no need.
We need to move on with the meeting.
Mr. Yachafano, for the record, you have a conflict...
I thought there was a motion pending, Council President.
...that disqualifies you from advising the council whether and can conduct a meeting tonight. You have a direct conflict of interest.
You're filing a lawsuit against us, you have a conflict of interest.
And how is this an advice from Attorney Deniger that we haven't even approved yet? I don't understand. You approved him on one lawsuit, we can't keep hiring this guy, he's not even approved to send stuff. We don't have anything approved, we're not gonna pay this guy that hasn't been approved by the majority of the council. So, in my opinion, whatever he said, it doesn't matter, because we didn't approve him.
Mr. Sackett, there is an approval, because it was a signed contract with the mayor. Your, your attorney unfortunately was not approved and was not allowed to intervene.
Deniger's days are numbered, so don't worry about it.
What does that mean, Mr. Yach, I mean, Mr. Sackett?
As soon as we get you out of here, we're ready to go, so let's start this meeting.
There's, yeah, there's no meeting.
I'd like to make a notion of vote of no confidence to remove Mr. Kelly as council president.
Second.
I'm recognizing your motion. I second it. Your motion's not being recognized, Mr. Sackett.
Could you take the roll, please?
You're not taking the roll.
Could you take the roll, please?
You're not taking the roll. There is no roll, because the motion's not recognized.
You worked for the council, not...
Mr. Kelly, on what authority do you presume to restrict the roll call vote on a...
I'm not recognizing the motion, the meeting hasn't opened, Mr. Yachafano, and I'm following on the rules of procedure of the meetings of council.
What makes you say the meeting has not opened, Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Yachafano, I'm not answering your questions now, Mr. Yachafano.
Don't go away, man.
No, it's not why, Mr. Jackson. We have a, an alleged legal meeting that's taking place, if we were to commence this meeting. We're actually in violation of potentially right now, under the act of communicating about these issues.
We're returning to add that on Friday.
Mr. Waters, please.
It's not your decision.
It is.
No, it isn't.
Vote him out.
How about them bears?
It's not the decision. The meeting is open. Roll call, vote him out.
There's no roll call, there's no, the motion's not recognized, and that's it, there's no roll call.
Listen, whoever doesn't wanna participate in the meeting that I called...
Mr. Mayor, you don't control meetings.
I'm not controlling the meeting, or, just leave if you don't wanna be part of the meeting.
Just leave.
Just a suggestion, just a suggestion, if you don't wanna move forward with the meeting that I arranged, just leave.
Leave.
Quit. Resign.
Please, you're not, I hear it, I hear it. You know what, when it's the other way around, it works for you. We have an issue. We have an issue that's going on right now, we have...
Listen, listen, let's, let's move forward with the meeting, there's a hearing on Friday, let the, let the proper people make a ruling as they have been doing. Obviously, this is not, this is not a battle between myself and the council, please know that. There, we disagree on issues, judge rules in favor of certain things sometimes, certain times, he rules in favor of the council, I get clarity on the issues, we put things to rest. When you can't come to an agreement with people, you get a mediator, a judge, you hire people, that's what's done. And you have someone, a neutral party, which is the judiciary, they make a ruling. I think it's in the best interest of the town that the council of nine move forward with this meeting that I called, and vote, and then they'll have their hearing on Friday.
Mr. Mayor...
It's the most, it's, you guys came out tonight, you guys came out for a meeting that I called, so...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I, and I understand it, even though we have some...
If you may, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, we have some other issues with the Faulkner Act of legislative branch that you're dealing with. Mr. Kelly, I gave you a minute.
Yeah, but you talk a lot about a lot of things, as you're, if you're an attorney. I've been receiving legal advice from our town attorney, as well as an attorney that I hired, and you have been receiving legal advice. And I'm under the belief that this meeting is allowed to proceed, so I don't know under what rules or what authority you have as a council president to dictate what nine people up here, you're a body of nine, and it needs to act that way, it's not a body of one.
Mr. Mayor, the problem that we have is that what you called for today is not of anything of any emergency or need for special, we have another meeting coming in August.
It's a special meeting, it's not an emergency.
We had, we had another meeting that selected members couldn't attend, of a regular meeting that dealt with some, a lot of work and effort for other individuals that are recipient of that, businesses and so forth. There's nothing that this can't be moved into a regular meeting that's been legally noticed moving forward.
Here's what I'm gonna leave you with, I would like the meeting to proceed, I called it, people came out, we have a majority of the council, I believe, that wants to move forward with the meeting. We have Mr. Jackson, who just made a motion that was seconded, to remove you from the chair as president for tonight, for tonight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Geniak?
You can put a mic up.
It's not a meeting, so it's irrelevant.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Geniak?
Oh, oh, Geniak.
Someone else take the roll?
Read, read the powers of the council president, since the mayor seems to have forgotten them already.
Mrs. Seeger, could you take the role then, if Ms. Clipperton will not take it, you are, I'm pretty sure you're a certified RMC?
My problem is that we don't have a meeting to have.
Mr. Sackett, in fairness to the clerk, okay, I would not wanna put the clerk in the position of having Ms. Seeger, who is a certified RMC, as is our clerk, I would not wanna put Ms. Seeger in that position unless the clerk herself declines to take the role.
Ms. Clipperton, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Yachafano, can we have a formal motion without the meeting being convened?
As far as I'm concerned, the meeting was convened.
I'd like to make a motion to convene this meeting.
Mr. Sackett?
I second that.
Was there any issues with the notice that you're aware of?
We have a second, can we take the role to convene the meeting, please?
Do it.
That's not fair.
Do your job. Do your job. Do your job.
You work for the town, not Tucker.
That's right, do your job.
Relax.
Do your job.
Mr. Sackett, can you please repeat your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to convene for this meeting to begin, please. Can I make a second?
Not recognize the motion, Mr. Sackett.
Meeting for you not to recognize...
There's no meeting, we're running, there's no meeting.
There's no meeting, you're absolutely...
We're starting the meeting.
Absolutely correct, Mr. Jackson.
Roll, please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Freelandr?
Yes.
Councilmember Jedniak?
Council President, can you please remind the clerk of the powers of the council president?
There's no discussion during a roll call.
For the record, where's Mr. Jedniak tonight?
None of my business.
None of my business?
He's not being an airport shuttle.
It's our business. It's here on the phone.
Please let the clerk continue.
Councilmember Jedniak?
Council President, will you please remind the clerk of the powers...
Yes or no, or abstain?
Mrs. Clipperton, under 251, questions of order, method of organization, and the conduct of business of the Rockaway Township Council, shall be determined by the council president.
Well, Mr. Kelly, if no meeting has commenced, you can't make any rulings.
The meeting's never commenced, Mr. Yachafano.
According to you, Mr. Kelly...
It's interesting that you wanna reference the code for the mayor's ability to call a meeting, but you remind him of the code, that the president has the ability to...
We're in the middle of a roll call.
That's very clear.
The roll call in progress, Ms. Abrahamsen.
There's no meeting to have a roll, Mr. Yachafano.
Which is it, do we follow the procedures, or not?
Mr. Puzio, we can easily add all this on a regular meeting with the...
We're gonna continue, I called for a special meeting tonight, and I wanna move forward. I've made my intentions known, I wanna move forward, we're in the middle of a roll, please continue.
Because the code, he's saying...
There's nine councilmen, please let them speak.
The code speaks that the president...
That's your opinion.
That, no, it's the code.
That is not the intent of that section of the code.
Mr. Mayor, is there any provision that has it where you run the meeting?
Sir, sir, I'm not running the meeting.
Okay.
I'm not running the meeting.
Please stop controlling the clerk.
I'm not controlling the clerk.
The meeting never started, never commenced. You wanna take a recess for a minute?
I can't breathe, nothing to recess. This isn't a meeting, this is a forum. Not a meeting, it's terribly, I agree, Mrs. Seeger, absolutely not.
I believe there are mistakes.
Is she live streaming? Wait, give her a minute.
Guys, please, please, everybody just quiet down for a moment.
Give her a minute, please.
She's in a hard position.
Please, please.
Mrs. Clipperton, are you aware of any violation of OTMA for tonight's meeting?
That is grossly inappropriate, Mr. Kelly.
It's a simple question.
No, you're not gonna intimidate, it's harassment. Your intimidation doesn't work anymore, you're a punk.
Mrs. Matos, could you have him removed, please?
There's no meeting, you can't remove him, there's no meeting. Nice try, Kelly, ain't gonna work. Don't go away mad, just go away. You can leave your seat now, if you like. Seriously. Are you, you want a sergeant-at-arms to remove somebody, that means there's a meeting then, right?
You're telling me there's not a meeting, Mr....
Oh, there's not a meeting?
I don't think the sergeant-at-arms, because you're acting obnoxious in a harassing manner, doesn't make a difference, Mr. Antonelli.
Wow. If he tells me he's gotta go, he's not here or here.
We're not starting a meeting, the meeting has not commenced, I have any motions to move forward, nor has the motion been recognized.
We're in the middle of a roll call.
We're not, we're in the middle of a roll call, the meeting hasn't commenced, is that what you're telling me?
Finish the roll call, please. Remind him, but, so move on, yes. Mayor, is there someone else you'd call, call a roll?
Let's give the clerk some time, please.
If we can, if we can continue the roll, please.
Council President, I would remind you that the council previously passed a motion stating that, that the clerk, clerk in the clerk's office takes direction from the council president.
No, you cannot.
Okay. My question is, any other meetings that were found to be not meetings by the judge, everything was just reversed, so what difference does it make if we go ahead tonight and the judge reverses everything?
But why, but you know what, and, and if you, if you have that, right, you're saying that what's the difference if we knowingly move into having an unlawful meeting?
We've done it before.
So you think it's okay that we knowingly do it, and then we ask for forgiveness from the judge after multiple violations that we've had with OTMA?
So what's the difference this time?
We're trying to move forward in the...
They take a roll call. If it benefits you.
This doesn't benefit me. No, it doesn't. It doesn't benefit me. But I'm not gonna be a part of having an illegal meeting, I have a responsibility as the council president. Mr. Jackson, I appreciate that, but I'm not gonna leave and let it happen.
Why are you here?
I'm not, I'm...
Folks, folks, may I ask you to all be quiet, please? We're not gonna accomplish anything with dialogue with the audience, just be patient, give the clerk some time, and we'll proceed from there. Thank you.
But why, why do we need a special meeting?
What's a special meeting?
Why? Why?
We had it for Miller's Airhouse, Mr. Jackson.
And the, and the council president, under the code, manages the meeting in the orders of direction, so which part of the code do you wish to listen to, Mr. Jackson?
Would you like me to answer that?
I'd like Mr. Yachafano to answer for me.
Under the section of the code that Ms. Abrahamsen, and Mr. Jedniak, and Mr. Kelly have referred to, the council president's authority is to chair and manage the meeting. It is not to unilaterally declare whether there is a meeting or not. The council president, I have read the book, Ms. Abrahamsen...
Read it out loud, read the code, it's right here, read the code.
That is not the intent of the section. The council president is the...
be moved to the August 13th regular meeting? What's the importance that has to be done tonight?
So you're going to say in public, on the film, to everybody here, that you will assure that every item on this agenda tonight will be on that agenda?
Make the agenda together so we can work...
No, 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 no. I'm asking a question. Every item on this agenda will be on that meeting's agenda. You control the agenda. You're going to assure everybody out here and us right now?
You know what? Pending litigation, yes, Mr. Sack, Mr. Jackson.
What is that?
That's a unreasonable response.
What do you mean pending litigation? Is it yes or no? It's a simple, it's a simple question.
Well, if there's a judge's rules in an opposite manner, how could I then meet your request?
The ruling is about this meeting. If you want to have a meeting, the regular meeting, that has nothing to do with the judge's ruling. Assure everybody here that you're going to have this on the next meeting agenda, every item on here.
We'll put the items that are on there outside of what the judge may determine that would be on the... Well, there's a, there's a matter that's on there that's actually an issue, too, Mr. Jackson.
But that has to do with this meeting?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, but so, nothing on here can go, cannot be on the regular meeting agenda.
Mr. Jackson, in all fairness, I asked you before, you didn't review the complaint, correct?
The, the complaint, I'm not going to discuss in public because it's an outstanding investigation.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's an outstanding case. I'm not going to comment in public on a case.
No, 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 but I'm saying that you received, you received the complaint today, and you haven't reviewed the complaint.
And I'm asking you a simple question.
Yes, yes.
So everything on this agenda will be on the next public meeting?
Unless the judge decided...
Then I want you to follow the judge.
No, we, we have the meeting, and the judge determines what we did is right or wrong. And then we redo it, just like you did. I'll take my chances with the judge.
President, a nodding question. If the mayor would like things on the agenda, then the mayor should discuss those with you elaborately.
I wouldn't like to move forward with the meeting tonight. I'll second it.
Let's have the vote, please.
There's no meeting to have a motion in order to have a roll call.
You started the roll call, you have to finish.
I didn't start the roll call, Mr. Friedlander. I didn't start. The meeting has been...
Get the roll call, ladies.
You have the video out there. You signed up the video?
I didn't start a meeting. I didn't commence a meeting, sir.
I'm asking the members of the public to please be quiet because the record of this meeting, I guarantee you, will be presented to Judge Makowitz for his consideration on Friday.
Correct.
I don't want public commentary when it's not called for. I respect your right to have public comment. There was going to be a public comment session at the end of this meeting, but I don't, any, I want, I don't want anything to impede with the record of what's being said at the dais or being said by anybody at this table. Ms. Redd? Can we have an affirmation that the tape is running and the video is running and it has been running since 7:30? That's a yes? Thank you.
Mary, how's your first meeting?
I have something to say.
Mrs. Cole?
I've come to Chappie Yellow now to confront him, the man that you've endorsed, the head of Chappie Cannon.
Ma'am, 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 we're not here for political, we're not here to politicize opioid addiction. That's, we're not, that's, that's not true. That's not true. That's not true. We're not here to politicize addiction. It's shameful to do that.
You should just get out. I do, I have, I have, I have a right to.
You know what you could do with that paper?
Christina, can you finish the roll, please? There's not a motion to be recognized.
Let's finish the roll, please.
All the items on this agenda will be moved to the future meeting. Is that simple? It's properly noticed already?
No. If you have confidence in the attorney Friday, then everything will be voided. We're having a meeting tonight. I, I, oh, for, to get it started. I'll, I'll take my chances with the attorney and the lawyers.
Is the town aware of any type of NFTs or fees for the pre-pleading that were annual, illegal, and then voided? Was there any kind of fee that was charged to us? Okay, so there is no monetary damage if we continue this meeting tonight. You have all stated that you wanted to work together. It is time to continue this meeting. If the judge on Friday says that it is incorrect, everything that happens will be voided, and will absolutely expect us to be on the agenda, the next scheduled meeting.
There's no reason why this can't be on the regular meeting. But there was so many avenues of what had been done that was not procedurally followed. I, I understand, but you haven't read the brief. You don't know what took place. I, I understand your position. I, I listen to what you're saying. I understand it. But there's more information that you're not aware of that, again, had just came at the later evening tonight, that are some, some concerns. I'm not willing to take those risks like we did in the past. Potentially having a monitor that's going to be, and additional money to the tax. There's a lot of things that could come out of this afterwards. Mr. Walters, I, I mean, I do, Waters, I, I hear you every single time, and, you know, there's some additional things that you're just not aware of. I mean, I, I understand your conspiracy theory that you have of this.
I've read all the court papers.
I'm sure that you have. But unfortunately, there are some concerns that we have for tonight. And I don't understand why that those concerns aren't conveyed to you in a sense where whatever is on tonight can't be presented at a regular scheduled meeting that's been properly noticed. You know?
Folks, folks, please, give the clerk a chance. She's going to be making a decision soon as to whether she's going to make the roll or not. Please, I understand, but please, just give her, let's let things calm down.
There's only an additional 14 days for a regular meeting to be scheduled, having stuff on there.
I'd like the attorney to give advice to the clerk, what her position is, so how we might try to make a decision.
I'd be happy to answer that question if I'm asked by the council, Mr. Hardy.
Can I ask you, Mr. Yachafano?
Yes, Councilman. It is the clerk's responsibility to conduct the roll call. If the clerk chooses for a reason that she feels is appropriate, that she does not wish to conduct a roll call, an individual can be designated as temporary acting clerk, but that could only be done by resolution or blank consignment of council. Even though Ms. Seeger is a certified or registered municipal clerk, as is Ms. Clipperton, she could not assume the role of acting or temporary acting clerk unless invited and authorized to do so, and in fact, I would advise Ms. Seeger that she should not perform that role unless properly authorized.
As pointed out earlier this evening, the holdover township attorney has a conflict of interest in this, in this meeting, reported meeting, and any advice that he's giving us is tainted with that conflict.
Could you please take the role?
There's not a meeting, Mrs. Clipperton, to actually have a role. There's no motion.
So just, just for the record, Mr. Kelly's instructing her not to take the role.
I said, Mr. Jackson, I said I did not recognize the motion for a roll call to be
taken.
So you're telling her not to take the role?
I said there has not been a motion that's been recognized for a roll call to be taken, nor is the meeting commenced. That's what I said. And I said it on the record.
Mr. Yachafano, she wants to ask you a question.
Mr. Jackson had asked before that if everything from tonight could be moved to a regular meeting, if that would be okay? Is that an option for tonight? Because the specific issues that are being raised are OPA violations. That is why the council president doesn't want to move forward. Mr. Jackson asked if everything could be moved to the next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting. As we've all argued in the past, the clerk's office does prepare the agenda. Is that an option for the August 13th meeting?
It would be an available option. I would suggest that, once again, the meeting has been called by the mayor under our administrative code. I would think that the recommendation to accept the offer which Councilman Jackson suggested would be up to the mayor to recommend to the council. Now, my concern is, okay, once again, I do not agree that Mr. Kelly has the authority to declare this a non-meeting, okay? That being said, if it's a non-meeting, which it can't be, how can any agreement made during the course of this meeting be, of a non-meeting be binding on the council?
Please, I understand, but please, just give her...let's let things calm down.
There's only an additional 14 days for a regular meeting to be scheduled. Have the stuff on there. Does the attorney give advice to the clerk what her position is today? So how do we try to make a decision?
The attorney is the counsel.
I'd be happy to answer that question if I'm asked by the counsel, Mr. Hardy.
Can I ask you, Mr. Yatrafano?
Yes, Councilman. It is the clerk's responsibility to conduct the roll call. If the clerk chooses for a reason that she feels is appropriate, that she does not wish to conduct a roll call, an individual can be designated as temporary acting clerk, but that could only be done by resolution or blank consignment of counsel. Even though Ms. Seeger is a certified or registered municipal clerk, as is Ms. Clipperton, she could not assume the role of acting or temporary acting clerk unless invited and authorized to do so. And in fact, I would advise Ms. Seeger that she should not perform that role unless properly authorized.
As was pointed out earlier this evening, the holdover township attorney has a conflict of interest in this meeting, purported meeting. And any advice that he's giving us is tainted with that conflict.
Ms. Clipperton, I'm going to ask you one more time. Could you please take the roll?
There's not a meeting, Mrs. Clipperton, to actually have a roll. There's no motion for a roll.
Just for the record, Mr. Kelly's instructing her not to take the roll.
I said, Mr. Jackson, I did not recognize the motion for a roll call to be taken.
So you're telling her not to take the roll?
I said, there has not been a motion that's been recognized for a roll call to be taken, nor has the meeting commenced. That's what I said.
Make a motion.
And I said it on the record.
Did you find what she wants to ask you?
Mr. Jackson had asked before that if everything from tonight could be moved to a regular meeting, if that would be okay. Is that an option for tonight? Because the specific issues that are being raised are OTMA violations. That is why the council president doesn't want to move forward. Mr. Jackson asked if everything could be moved to the next regularly scheduled meeting. As we have all argued in the past, the clerk's office does prepare the agenda. Is that an option for the August 13th meeting?
It would be an available option. I would suggest that, once again, the meeting has been called by the mayor under our administrative code. I would think that the recommendation to accept the offer which Councilman Jackson suggested would be up to the mayor to recommend to the council. Now, my concern is, okay, once again, I do not agree that Mr. Kelly has the authority to declare this a non-meeting, okay? That being said, if it's a non-meeting, which it can't be, how can any agreement made during the course of this meeting of a non-meeting be binding on the council? It's an inherent contradiction.
Well, Mr. Yatrafano, the agenda is prepared Friday prior to the meeting that's going to commence on that following Tuesday. You prepared the agenda. It's there.
Well, the problem, Mr. Kelly, is this, that under Mr. Jedniak's administration as council president and under your administration as council president, the position has been taken by Mr. Jedniak and yourself that you control the agenda in the clerk's hands. There have been many occasions when items submitted by the mayor administration have not permitted to be on the agenda and the count or removed from the agenda, as is most recently evidenced by the election of Mr. Palumbo's replacement, which was scheduled for the last council meeting and was on the preliminary agenda and then removed by you. Now, we have repeatedly advised the council, and you have a copy, all of you have had copies of Mr. Perone's memo advising, as you just quoted, from the Open Public Meetings Act and from the statutes in the Faulkner Act, more appropriately, of what the powers of the council are and are not, and what the powers of the council president are or not. In fact, the Faulkner Act doesn't even mention a council president or vice president, okay? That is truly a creature of our administrative code. Now, given what I'm going to call the history of the council president, whomever he may be, over the last year and seven months, taking the position that they can unilaterally control the agenda before it's admitted to the council at a meeting. I can't speak for the mayor, but I don't know if that's the kind of horse the mayor wants to place a bet on.
Mr. Yatrafano, we're talking about an OTMA violation.
I would like to move forward with the meeting.
He notices that are deficient on behalf. That's the concern that we have. And the other thing is, I believe that you're on for this agenda to have the mayor appoint you, which we didn't even know until last minute. And then here you are arguing to have this meeting, which you strictly can benefit from, with the other issues on that. So you're willing to have an illegal meeting just to potentially appoint yourself or your firm?
There are many matters on the agenda, Mr. Kelly.
And yours is one of them as well.
Exclusive of the appointment of the township attorney. Are you saying that you will declare this a legal meeting if the township attorney's appointment is removed from the agenda?
No, there's no compromise to the violation. Mr. Yatrafano, there's no compromise to the violation of OTMA. The judge has been seeing so many of these violations coming down, some of which is even an advice that you had given us, and then went to court. You never mentioned the advice that you gave us, which led to a violation. So I'm even more concerned of those issues that are going on.
Just like the advice we gave you prior to the September 14th, 2018 meeting.
And you know what, Mr. Yatrafano? The advice you gave, you couldn't ratify after that meeting to correct those flaws. And you were wrong about that as well.
How were we wrong, Mr. Kelly? We advised you that the meeting was illegal before it took place. You nevertheless decided, you and Mr. Jedniak and Ms. Abramson and your council team, to proceed with the meeting.
I don't have a council team, Mr. Yatrafano.
Can we please, can we?
Can I say something, please?
Quiet down and just move forward with the meeting.
You know, you...all of us are supposed to be loving compassionate people. Can we have a...show a little compassion for the clerk? If...and not as a meeting, and I know we can't make a decision as a meeting, but if the council president or whoever does the agenda says they will put all this information on the agenda for the August 13th, I am not going to participate in an illegal meeting. The last illegal meeting I participated in, I did not know it was illegal prior to it being held. But I'm not going to participate in a meeting that I'm being told is illegal. I'm sorry.
It's not illegal. We don't know if it is. It hasn't been declared illegal, Mrs. Smith.
Well, my...the council's attorney said it is. The attorney representing the council in the lawsuit.
We have conflicting decisions, Mr. Jackson.
There's no decision yet. There's been no hearing. You have an attorney. And by the way, you're the one who said we can hire an attorney for Ms. Clipperton, and we had the right to do that, and I believe the judge said you were wrong with that, too. So...
Well, then why?
You wanted the trial.
And Mrs. Abramson, you want to talk about conflict. You're in the middle of suing the township. Maybe you should be...not be talking, because it's conflict. You're costing us money.
You know what, Mr. Jackson? Here you are working with the mayor that's suing us. I mean, that's kind of Hippocritical and oxymoron.
I'm not working with anybody but the people here and the people at the stairs.
Council president.
Go ahead. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, say it.
What's that? No, it was never put on the agenda. Never put it on. She wasn't even appointed at the time.
It was on the draft agenda.
Council president, if I may, first of all, if you'd please take a look at 2-5.7. 2-5.7 says, "The business of the council at a special meeting shall be taken up for consideration." That's a mandatory requirement and command of our administrative code. Also, if you look at...one second. If you look at 10-4-8B of the Faulkner Act, it defines a meeting. And the Faulkner Act says a meeting is...
You mean the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes.
OTMA or Faulkner Act?
10:4-8.
Which is the OTMA?
A meeting means and includes any gathering at which a quorum is present. You have a meeting. You've had a meeting since 7:30, when all...when it was obvious that a quorum of the council was in place pursuant to the meeting notice that was published.
Wouldn't we be a violation of the special meeting because we're not talking of what's on the agenda? And we didn't notice of what's on the agenda?
No, we're talking about the meeting and getting the meeting moving, Mr. Kelly, okay? So now you start this agenda, you start this discussion by reading an unsolicited...well, maybe I shouldn't say unsolicited letter from Mr. Deeninger as the foundation for your protocol that the meeting is a non-meeting, that it's an illegal meeting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You are commanded by statute. You have a quorum. The meeting must proceed.
So, Mr. Yatrafano, I'm still going to stick with 2-5.1 with the rules of procedure in the meeting of the council. It's on there. And even additionally concerning, if we go to nominations under 2-5.17, upon receipt of the mayor and his nomination to any portion or of office, the same shall be read under administrative agenda, which we don't have in front of us.
There is no administrative agenda when the entire agenda at this meeting is an administrative agenda.
It doesn't have anything that says administrative agenda.
It's been called by the mayor. The mayor is the administration.
Unless new business, when shall be taken up for action?
There is no new business on a special meeting agenda because the special meeting agenda is fixed and cannot be supplemented.
Well, that's why you have the nominations for you, even something that's not as per code, under 2-5.17.
Council president, could you please remind the holdover attorney that he has a conflict of interest due to his monetary interest in the agenda this evening?
You don't have to remind him of anything. I called for the meeting. The attorney did not call for the meeting.
But the attorney's participating in something.
And he's going to continue to participate because he is our town attorney. And he gets appointed yearly. A town attorney gets picked yearly. He's going to continue. He's a holdover, but that would be correct, according to what the judge said. He is on the agenda for tonight. I would like to move forward with the meeting that I called. He's getting paid by the hour. Although I like Mr. Yatrafano, I would like to get us out of here as quickly as possible.
Then will we reschedule the meeting for the 13th of August?
No.
It wouldn't even have had to been paid for tonight.
You would be avoiding any potential violations, Mr. Mayor.
Council president, I would like to move forward with the meeting. I'm not going to go back and forth with you. I'm not here to commiserate with you.
And I agree.
I'm not here to talk. It's obvious that you don't want to move forward. There's nine council people. I would love to hear them speak. It's their meeting. It's your meeting. Nine council people. It's not my meeting. I called for the meeting, but they are the ones who are going to participate. I don't have a vote here. There's nine people up here.
Eight confirmed council members.
Yes, agree.
Yeah, it's not...
Nine council people.
I've stated I'm ready to move forward with the meeting. I'd like to continue the roll and get started. We've been here an hour already.
Mr. Sack, your motion has not been recognized. We have a potential unlawful meeting that's taking place.
It is potential. You don't know till after the fact. You wipe it out.
We have a notice that's an issue, Mr. Freeland.
Yeah, we notice. I don't buy that notice.
No, I'm not a lawyer now. I understand. I'm in conflict with Mr. Yatrafano with the quorum that he has.
Mr. Kelly, I thought Judge Minkowitz ruled that there was no conflict.
We're right now, Mr. Yatrafano, we're in conflict because of what we want to do and what we have here. And litigation is pending still.
I wonder why.
We can easily resolve this, Mr. Freeland. You're taking away.
Yes, have the meeting tonight. That's how you resolve it. Don't stop it already. Enough's enough. If I'm here till 1 o'clock in the morning to have a meeting, I'll be here. I'll wake you.
Mr. Yatrafano, one more time, could you please clarify what our options are again? One more time, if Ms. Clipperton doesn't want to take the role. Just one more time, please clarify.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sackens. Repeat that, please.
What are our options if Ms. Clipperton will not take the role to move forward with the meeting?
Council president, could you please remind everyone of the holdover attorney's conflict of interest?
You're giving advice to him, Mr. Yatrafano, to a matter that's still pending on there that you've been conflicted out. You read all the papers, Mr. Waters.
I did.
Okay, he's conflicted out.
We conflicted out. We did not. It said you have to pay him according to the last year's contract.
We're not talking about pay. We're talking about participation.
Thanks.
Councilman Sackens, you've heard my opinion in the citations that when a quorum is present and the meeting is validly noticed, which I submit this meeting has been validly noticed. You have a meeting, okay? It appears that the council president is unwilling to acknowledge that a meeting exists, and although she has not weighed in on it, the council vice president evidently is of the same opinion.
Mr. Yatrafano, there was reasonable proof that we have a failed notice for this meeting. You are aware of it, and you're telling us otherwise.
Under the section of Robert's Rules of Order that I read to you, if the presiding officer or officers of the council are unwilling to follow the request of the majority of the council, the council can move to elect a temporary presiding officer and move on with the meeting based upon that temporary presiding officer running the meeting. I have also told you that it is our opinion that the section which has been incited now probably a dozen times during this meeting does not give any presiding officer of the council the right to unilaterally declare a non-meeting or to control beyond normal management the administration of any meeting. That's my opinion.
Mr. Sackens, I'm going to read you again. Rules and procedures of meetings of the council. 2-5.1, Governing Rules. Question of order, methods of organization and the conduct of the business of the Rockaway Township Council shall be determined by the council president, who, at his discretion, may choose to have any matter in the issue concerning question of order, methods of organization and the conduct of business determined by a majority vote of the council. May, by the way, may. Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules of Order may be consulted for general guidance to aid in this disposition or resolution of any issue. However, Robert's Rules of Order shall not have any binding effect on any matter issued before the township council.
You do it when it's convenient, don't you?
No, we don't. We just use it for a guidance aspect a little bit, so...
Yeah, okay.
All right, let's get this meeting going. I'll make a motion to elect Councilman Jack Cohen as a temporary resigning officer for tonight's meeting. I second that. Roll call, please.
I'll do the roll call. Council president, could you please remind everyone that the council passed a motion stating that the county clerk and the clerk's office takes direction from the council president and the council vice president in his absence.
Mr. Freeland, are you ready?
That is correct.
Robert refuses to call a roll in a official meeting because of form. What kind of position are you required in? He's required by law. He's going to lose it. I don't believe me, I don't want to say that. I hope he doesn't, but if he can't do a job, he's going to lose it.
So you're saying you want the clerk to participate in an illegal meeting? You want the clerk to participate in an illegal meeting?
Mr. President, it hasn't been established that it's illegal. That's the attorney's opinion that it is an illegal meeting tonight. It'll be determined Friday.
Mr. Freeland, did you ask the clerk if there was a deficiency in the notice?
She was asked. She didn't answer it. Did she?
You asked her.
She shouldn't ask it. There's litigation.
That's correct, Abraham.
She shouldn't.
She shouldn't ask.
And if asked, she should not respond.
Yes.
Read the papers. It's on E Courts. It's on E Courts. Anybody can go on E Courts. I'll give you the number. It was. It was.
There really should be no discussion of pending litigation. I'm sorry, there shouldn't be.
You just heard what the attorney just told you.
Folks, please, let their... Folks, folks, please, please, let them conduct business. They're right in the middle of... Vote, vote, please, please. Let them conduct business. They're right in the middle of... Let them do what they need to do, please.
They want us to have the meeting.
Please, it's throwing things off track. No, it's okay.
That's interesting.
It's just not easy.
Ms. Clipperton, we have two motions still waiting to start the meeting and also the other one for Councilman Quinn. Please take the roll call.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Clipperton, the motion has not been recognized.
So again, Mr. Kelly's not or not thinking about...
There's potential of a meeting being noticed.
Potential. Take the call.
I'm taking the high road as to what I'm stating as far as what occurred.
Please, vote, vote, please.
I can easily move all of this to the 13th of August meeting. I have the ability to do that under the rules and procedures under 25.1 to do so.
Let's vote now.
You want to do that, Mr. Jackson?
I want to vote now on the motions we have outstanding. Yes.
The motions aren't recognized, Mr. Jackson.
So again, you're instructing the clerk not to take the role, correct?
I'm saying the motion has not been recognized, Mr. Jackson.
Same thing.
Meeting hasn't commenced. The motions are not being recognized. Exactly, Mr. Waters.
Roll call. We're going with the roll call.
Chrissy, there's a quorum. You have to start the meeting.
Have you fat yourself for this?
No. No, I'm not happy that this is taking place at all. What the mayor's trying to do tonight is no reason why it can't take place at a regular meeting that was properly noticed and lawful. Just because everybody's here doesn't mean that it's legal, sir. Who said it wasn't?
It's in question.
Vote, vote, please, please. Let's not argue.
It's not until it is. Let's move on. Possibly isn't, is. What if, could have, should have.
Chrissy, please take the role. You know there is elections coming up in November. Things are going to change, so please take the role. So we can move on. It's over an hour we've been here already. Please. I know you don't want to be here all night. I don't want to be here all night, so let's take the role, please.
Mr. Sackens, I have told you the meeting hasn't commenced and your motions aren't recognized.
Started the roll call, let's finish.
I'd be happy to share with you that.
You want to be ashamed of yourself. I'm 85 years old. I've lived in this township over 60 years and I've never been so ashamed of this proceeding as before. I think that it is not fair or right, whether it's legal or not. It's not fair, it's not right.
Roll call. Clipperton, do your job.
Come on, take a vote. Get the meeting going.
Keep them careless.
Man.
And the meeting is already started.
Councilmember Freeland?
Yes.
Here.
Councilmember Jedniak?
Council President, would you please remind the clerk of the powers of the council president under the...
Simple yes or no.
...code. Council President, could you please also read items F and G from the municipal charter law?
Simple yes or no.
Vote, vote, quiet down. Let her do her job.
What was that again, Mr. Jedniak, please?
Council President, municipal charter law legislative power, items F and G.
We're in the middle of a roll call. Cut the line.
Under 4069A36F, the adoption of rules for the council. Under 4069A36G, the establishment of times and place for council meetings, which is under the legislative branch, not the executive branch or powers of the mayor.
Court cannot transfer power from the council to the mayor. That's clear violation of the statute. We have a holdover township attorney who is in conflict, gives a monetary interest in the outcome of the proceeding, and any advice that he is giving is tainted with that conflict. You please ask the holdover attorney to acknowledge his conflict of interest.
Jedniak's no lawyer either. Roll call.
Mr. Yatrafano, are you in conflict?
Mr. Yatrafano, I'm going to ask you to allow him to conduct business and not get sidelined. A barrage of questions. Please don't answer.
It's just one of the questions. There's a conflict of interest in Mr. Yatrafano.
In the middle of a roll call.
Council President, I didn't hear the holdover attorney answer. What was it?
The mayor directed him not to answer any questions.
He already answered the question three times.
The case, and we shouldn't be paying the township attorney to be holdover attorney for being here. He should simply leave.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is the Mr. Yatrafano in conflict?
I'm not an attorney.
I'm just asking you in general, though, from the judge's side.
Sir, I already spoke to you about this. I'm not here to commiserate and exchange thoughts and ideas about whether he's in conflict, whether he's not in conflict. It's apparent that we can't come to some mutual agreement.
We can. We can have this meeting.
We're not going to have the meeting. I said that I would like to move forward tonight and obviously we've been ending up in court. And court gives us clarity, and you'll be there on Friday. I would like to proceed with the meeting. Thank you.
Council President, could you please ask the mayor if the holdover attorney has a monetary interest in the proceeding?
Mr. Jedniak, you can continue to speak. You can continue to talk. That's your right. And I also have a right of non-response to you. I'm not required to respond to you. Thank you.
You asked the mayor the question?
No, you may not. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Roll call.
We're in the middle of a roll call.
The motion hasn't been recognized, Mr. Mayor.
It has been recognized.
No, it hasn't.
Yes, it has.
Mr. Kelly, you can speak all you want. I gave you why I'm not going to have an exchange. You continue to talk. I'm not going to answer questions.
Council President, presides the meeting. Okay? You do not decide the meeting.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you for that clarity, sir. Thank you.
Meeting has not commenced. The motion has not been recognized. That's it.
In the middle of a roll call.
We are going to move all of this to the next meeting.
No, we're not.
I will read it again under 25.1. Questions of order, methods of organization and the conduct of business of the Rockaway Township Council shall be determined by the council president. We will move this to the next meeting, Mr. Mayor. We will resolve this. We will get an answer from the judge on Friday.
I would like to move forward with the meeting that I called.
You not control. You decide the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Ball in favor?
You got it, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you for your input.
We have an illegal meeting taking place and you want to conduct this.
That's your opinion. It hasn't decided yet again. You keep on saying it's an illegal meeting. Have the meeting, let it be determined that it's illegal.
Mr. Freeland?
That's right. You can call me whatever.
What's going on here tonight? There's no reason why you can't take another 14 days to be lawfully heard.
14? You've done this before, Mr. President. There's a special meeting with an agenda. Let's vote. You don't want to vote for it? Don't vote for it.
Mr. Freeland does a special meeting with flaws.
That's your determination. Let's see what happens after the vote. Let Friday play its course out.
And then you can still put this on for the following Friday?
No, I want it done before.
Excuse me, this could all have been taken care of at the July 9th meeting. That people called out sick and I'm working and what have you, so...
I know, figured that. I'll tell you my reason. Tell that to the president of my company and the owner that flew in from China and I was told I had to do something and go pick them up and take them wherever they want. That's not collaboration. That's a livelihood protected.
And I understand that, Mr. Freeland. And you did say to me at the parade that you did it on Thursday, that you picked them up at the airport. And then now, you know, it was Tuesday we had the meeting.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
Oh, I didn't.
How about the meeting, you guys ran out the back door?
Yeah, okay, lies.
Mr. Jackson, you were in Ireland. You didn't even have the decency to telephone.
Told you what day, okay, yeah.
We're moving the business to the August 13th meeting. That's simple. Hey, Mr. Quinn, tell them the time is. We're moving to the 13th of August. Do it lawfully.
Now, you have to take a vote on that, right?
Excuse me? No, I don't. I can tell you when it's...
You can tell me this and you can tell me that. There's nine of us. If whoever doesn't claim that there's a meeting, why are you sitting up there? That's what I don't understand. If you claim that... And I know I'm a guest because I'm constantly reminded of that. But I am the mayor and I do have, would like to have a little input. If you don't, and I'm trying to move things forward, although I don't control the meeting, I understand that. If you feel that there's not a meeting, if you feel that there's not a meeting, then why are you sitting up there to prevent one from taking place? It's ludicrous.
Preventing you from doing something illegal, Mr. Mayor.
To stop further litigation.
Oh, thank you.
No, it won't ever.
You'll be a new council president in January, you know.
Please, let's, please, please.
Listen, Mr. Freeland, I told you, this is not comfortable. This is not a comfortable position to be in, at all. But I am.
You're determining a decision, that a decision was made prior to this meeting. You keep on saying Friday, Friday, Friday. What's today? Okay, do this. Let the judge say we had an illegal meeting and you have to recoup it and redo it. You still have an attorney there. You're still being billed.
But if you're actually taking place knowingly, that's when you can get penalized.
I don't know if...
The prosecutor's office can review that and penalize you if you knowingly, like you're saying. I don't care if it's unlawful.
They're penalizing you for the last year and a half. Prosecutor. They're prosecutors.
It's part of the statute, Mr. Freeland.
You twist things around every time. You ought to know, Patty.
Mr. Freeland, please.
I don't... Let's move on to the meeting. You took an attendance. You started.
We didn't. You keep trying to push something that's illegal to happen.
So whoever thinks it's illegal, there's the door. Whoever thinks it's legal, stay. And then we'll see the numbers. And then we'll determine if we can have a meeting. Well, we can have a meeting.
Mr. Freeland, if you want us to remove ourselves so you can actually have a legal meet, or illegal meeting, is that what you're telling me?
No, then we can have the legal meeting.
I mean, if that's what you're trying to do, to have us leave so you can have an illegal meeting, it would make even more to stay.
That's up to you.
We're not gonna leave until you have an illegal meeting.
Could please take the roll, otherwise we have to make a separate motion to have someone else fill in as a temporary clerk.
Council President, could you please remind everyone of the council?
Did you say I was on drugs the other day? Was that a fact? Did you tell Kelly I was on drugs? Good. Thank you. That's on the record now, you know?
No record. This isn't a meeting.
Yeah, there is a record. This is communication leading up to a meeting pertaining to a meeting. It's all on the record. The council with the mayor vote, but... Roll call, please. Meeting, in the proper opinion, might need other council people. We won't know that for the roll call. You're doing a great job.
I'd like to take a vote on a council to have Ms. Seeger take over as clerk for tonight's meeting. Second. Councilman Freeland, yes or no?
Yes.
Councilman Quinn?
Yes.
Councilman Quinn, good. Councilman Noon? Five council members have voted to have Ms. Seeger take over as acting clerk tonight.
Can I have an attorney opinion on that, please? John?
There's been a vote by the majority of the council. You may respond to that vote.
Under the rules of the procedures and meetings of the council...
What did you say, Mr. Yatrafano? I can do that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your advice, Mr. Yatrafano. Okay.
Mr. Kelly, either we have a meeting or we don't.
We're not having a meeting.
If we don't have a meeting, then your rulings, then your rulings are meaningless. Otherwise, you're obligated to proceed. Since you evidently decided you're not gonna run a meeting, the council may designate a substitute chair if that's your motion.
Ms. Seeger, I'd like to make a motion to have Councilman Quinn as a chair for the meeting tonight. I second that.
Mr. Sackett is first. Mr. Jackson seconds that motion. I'd like to call a roll call. Mr. Quinn? Mrs. Smith?
Under the advice of my attorney, I will not be participating in this illegal meeting.
So you're abstaining, Mrs. Mr. Mr. Sackett?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, there's no absence of the council...
Ms. Noon?
To have another chair.
Okay. Mr. Freeland?
Yes.
Mr. Jacks, I mean, Mr. Jenneyack? I've already read the code, and I have an attorney advice. Mr. Jenneyack, please say yes, no, or abstain. Okay, no answer? Uh, Mr. Ms. Abrahamsen? Ms. Abrahamsen? Mr. Kelly? Okay, no answer. So that's five yeses.
I have an answer. I was respecting the council president speaking.
Ms. Abrahamsen, what's your answer?
There is no meeting taking place. There should be no roll call.
Okay, then, all right, you abstain. Mr. Kelly?
It's an illegal meeting, Mrs. Seeger.
Okay, so abstaining.
This meeting is under litigation.
So it's five yeses, so that is approved. Mr. Quinn, would you like to run the meeting? And we have a sergeant-at-arms that can remove anybody that you wish.
Yes, thank you. All right, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you.
This is a blatant usurp of legislative branch of government. Blatant, blatant, blatant.
All right, clerk, may I have a roll call, please? It's on the list here.
Attendance.
Regular roll call?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Your attendance.
Are you here? If you're present or not present?
Well, you see her. You put down what she is.
It's roll call. Mr. Quinn, here?
Here.
Mr. Sackett?
Here.
Mr. Freeland?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Noon?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Mrs. Smith? Abstain. Abstain. Mr. Kelly?
This meeting is illegal.
Mr. Kelly is here. Mrs. Abrahamsen?
This meeting is under litigation, has been filed. A potential illegal meeting, and I will not take part in such.
Are you leaving? Are you staying or leaving, then?
I said my comment.
Mr. Jenneyack? Okay, all right, roll call is done. There's nine people here.
Thank you. Under rules of procedure, meeting of the council, questions of order, and method of organization and the conduct of business...
All right, Mr. Kelly, this is the third time. Thank you. All right, moving forward. This meeting was advertised in the Daily Record and the Star Ledger, the official newspaper of Township of Rockaway, July twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Notice was posted on the official bulletin boards in the Township of Rockaway.
Mr. Quinn, were all notices made? Compliance to the old...
That is the clerk's job.
Mrs. Seeger?
I did not make the notices. The clerk just left the room, so you'll have to ask her another time.
All right, I'm moving on. Designation Sergeant-at-Arms. We all know what that is. I don't have to read that whole thing. Ordinances, Mr. Jenneyack, if you can't control yourself, all right? All right, ordinances to introduce. Ordinance oh nineteen fifteen. And I will run these all in consecutive order.
You have to read them.
Yes, we...
All right. Amending Article four, Chapter two, Rules of Procedure, Meetings of the Council, Section two dash five point one, Governing Rules, Sec. subsection two dash five point two, Regular Meetings, and two dash five point eight, Elections and Duties, The Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Rockaway, oh nineteen sixteen. All right, we'll take one at a time. I have no problem with that.
All right, introduce, roll call.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Can you take a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sackett?
Yes.
Mr. Jenneyack? Mr. Jenneyack, yes, no, or abstain? That's the choices.
Mr. Jenneyack, thank you.
Ms. Abrahamsen?
This is in violation of the municipal charter law and the procedures in our code.
All right, is that an abstain?
And the violation of OPMA, the Open Public Meeting Act.
Mrs. Smith?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ms. Noon?
Yes.
Mr. Freeland?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
This meeting is a violation of OPMA as well as the Faulkner Act.
So that is one, two, three. That's five yeses. Motion carries.
Okay. Zero nineteen dash sixteen. Amending Article four, Chapter two, Rules of Procedures, Meetings of the Council, subsection two dash five point seven C, Ordinances of the Township of Rockaway. May I have a motion?
Did you miss one?
I missed a lot, all right. Oh, Order of the Business and Agenda of the Revised General Ordinances of Township of Rockaway. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sackett?
Yes.
Mr. Jenneyack?
Council President, Council President, the action being taken continues to follow...
Ms. Abrahamsen?
...violates both the township code and municipal charter law.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Ms. Abrahamsen?
This meeting is violating OPMA, Municipal Code, and the Faulkner Act.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Abstain.
Ms. Noon?
Yes.
Mr. Freeland?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
This meeting is a violation of OPMA, the Faulkner Act, and the Municipal Administrative Code.
Five, five yeses, four abstains. Motion pass.
Okay. Coordinates nineteen dash seventeen, Amending Article five, Chapter two, Organization of the Township Government, Section two dash six point three, Township of Rockaway.
Attorney?
Attorney of the Revised General Orfus, Ordinances of the Township of Rockaway. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sackett?
Yes.
Mr. Abra, Mr. Jenneyack?
Council President, the action being taken continues to follow...
Thank you, Jeremy.
Ms. Abrahamsen?
Charter law and the OPMA.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Ms. Abrahamsen?
This meeting is in violation of OPMA, the municipal charter law, and the Township's Policy and Procedure and Code.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Abstain.
Ms. Noon?
Yes.
Mr. Freeland?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
This meeting is a violation of OPMA, the Faulkner Act, as well as our...
That's five yes. Council President, motion carries.
Okay, Resolutions one and two are nineteen one fifty-two. Resolution to increase the bid threshold for Rockaway Township. R nineteen one fifty-three, Amending Resolution R nineteen ten, granting authorization to retain professional services, the cost of which are anticipated to exceed the bid threshold in accordance with the local public contracts law. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Can I have a vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sackett?
I may be recognized. You didn't open it for discussion.
It's a consent agenda?
There is no discussion on that. It's a resolution.
You can, if you want.
Yeah, no, you...
Okay, you can talk. Go ahead.
Under reconsideration of this motion that you're talking about for that resolution, one fifty-two, we're acknowledging it's a meeting. Need to reconsider, under Robert's rules, on page one twenty-four, we've addressed this with Mr. Jackson in the previous end of it. It seems to be very selective on Robert's rules when it works or when it doesn't work for you. The reconsideration on that, only a member who voted on a prevailing side can make that motion. Needs second. So you're trying to bring in something that's already been denied, not only on one occasion, but on multiple occasions. So you're trying to have this resolution to be in there again. You're circumventing even having the opportunity for discussion about that by continuing, starting a roll call on that. Therefore, I think this motion should be tabled.
Well, again, I gave you the floor, so you're having discussion, aren't you?
You already started the roll, Mr. Quinn.
You're already discussing, aren't you?
I mean, I'm just trying to have it so that we have some normality here. I cannot believe that we're trying to do the right thing, and Mr. Quinn is acting as the council president. In the absence of the council president, if it did take place, it would be the vice president, not you, Mr. Quinn. I just can't get over how much violation of the Administrative Code it's taking place. And you can't even bring this motion forward.
Unless somebody that passed it brings it forward.
Of the majority.
It's not a revote. It's a new resolution number, so it's a new resolution.
You're amending the original resolution, nineteen ten.
There's no amendment on it. It's a new resolution.
It is an amending, a resolution that already passed, but this is a new resolution number. It is not a revote.
You have it as for the amendment, Mrs. Seeger. It's on the record. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Well...
Would you like to call the roll?
Yes, please.
All right, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sackett?
Yes.
Mr. Jenneyack?
All right, thank you.
Ms. Abrahamsen?
All the actions taken right here, right now violate OPMA, Faulkner Act, and Administrative Code.
Mrs. Smith?
Abstain.
Mrs. Noon?
Yes.
Mr. Freeland?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
First, it was never closed in discussion. Second, this meeting is illegal under the Faulkner Act, as well as our Administrative Code, and...
Council President, Mr. Quinn, the vote is five to four, and motion pass.
Thank you. All right, the mayor's appointment with advice and consent... All right, the mayor's appointment with advice and consent of the council Township Attorney, Yachubano and Perone Esquire. May I have a motion?
Well, I'm supposed to present that, but--
All right, go for it.
No, 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 that's fine. I know we were working a little bit out of--
Well, I'm trying to get this thing moving.
No, absolutely. I know it's been, uh, tonight's meeting has been a little unorthodox, to say the least. And I want to, I appreciate that everybody did attend tonight. I'm gonna say that. And with that, with that, I want to present to you once again, uh, our town attorney, our holdover attorney, who hopefully he gets voted in tonight, Yachubano and Perone. That's my pick, that's who I want to present to the council as our town attorney.
All right, clerk, please take a roll.
May I take a motion?
Motion.
Uh, motion.
I'll make the motion.
I want to be recognized, Mr. Quinn?
I'm in the middle of-- All right, let's talk. I'll go for it.
Well, Mr. Quinn, as you're aware, this is a special meeting. Uh, the agenda is much different than it's supposed to be on the special meeting that was provided by the mayor and his administration to the clerk, circumventing what we have under 40, 69A, 36G. Definitely on top of that, we have no new business. We do not have an administrative agenda. And I'll read you under the code 2-5 dot 17. Upon receipt from the mayor of his nomination to any office proportion, thou same shall be read under administrative agenda by the clerk, and unless otherwise ordered, shall be considered by the council after discussion or new business. We do not have new business under this agenda to bring this nomination up. When taken up for action, the president shall put the question on each nomination as follows. Will the council confirm a nomination? In the motion, a vote shall be ordered and a simple majority or more members vote to confirm. The president shall announce the nomination is confirmed. If less than a simple majority vote confirmed, the president shall announce the nomination is rejected. We do not have the agenda performed with-- This code states a nomination. Secondly, we look at our July 12 order from Judge Minkowitz. It clearly states another attorney. Mr. Fuzio, Mr. Fuzio is actually nominating the attorney that the judge said to put up another attorney, not the same. So now we're going to be in violation of the judge's order. I believe you received that as well as all the other members. It's unfortunate that some of the members, your attorney was not allowed to intervene because he was ultra vires and illegally appointed.
The judge did not order that. That's inaccurate, the judge did not order that. That was not in the section of the order.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps you may want to read that order?
No, I don't have it here, but I'm telling you that it was not in the order.
Okay.
The judge, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to pretend to be one like some people do. But what I will tell you is that after speaking with my attorney, asking him that very question, I was told that that was not put in the order section. There's a decision that's made. The judge proffers certain, uh, you know, legal ease that's in there, and what he feels is good is not good. And then he makes a conclusion, makes an order, maybe I'm not presenting that correctly. And then there's a portion of what he decided that says, "You must do this." And that was not in the "you must do this" portion.
The reasoning was clarification to the order of the judge.
I'm not giving clarification. I'm just telling you what was relayed to me because I asked the very question that you asked of my attorney.
You're asking legal advice from an attorney that's been conflicted out of this matter.
Who is that? Who's the attorney that's been conflicted out? I don't know who you're speaking of.
I think you're looking at Mr. Yachubano.
No, no, no. I didn't say that. Can I second the motion then?
Mr. Quinn, are you moving forward? Given there's a potential violation of the, our Administrative Code under 2517, as well as the judge's order, as well as--
Yes, I am. Let's move forward.
Do I get this right? Mr. Sackett first, Mr. Manning second?
Any of these actions, don't take it.
Thank you.
Mr. Freelander, sorry.
Can you please take the roll?
Yes. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sackett?
Yes.
Mr. Geniak?
Council President, the actions continuing to be taken violate the code, municipal charter law, and the OPMA. Can you please confirm for everyone that you are not recognized?
This is Ms. Abrahamson.
Can you quay tonight?
Ms. Abrahamson?
The actions taken in this room tonight violate OPMA, Faulkner Act, Administrative Code, and also violates the judge's orders on a previous order.
Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Smith?
I abstain, this is illegal.
Thank you. Ms. Noon?
Yes.
Mr. Freelander?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
This meeting is a violation of the Administrative Code, it's also a violation of OPMA, it's also a violation of the Faulkner Act and the order from Judge Minkowitz stated, July 7 or 12.
Council President, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
The roll call is five. Um, that's the majority, motion pass.
All right, we have a section here for open to the public. All right. Michael Alardi was first signed in.
Good morning, I mean, good evening. A couple things, that 14 Cayuga in White Metal Lake that I brought up in the past, I know it's, they've had violations, but there's been no change in the property besides the stickers on the door. So if that could be, continue to be looked at on a regular basis, I'd appreciate it. The, um, issues with short-term rentals, I hope the council and the township is going to continue to work on an ordinance to prevent short-term rentals. As I've explained to some, that White Metal Lake does not have any jurisdiction on people's homes, only our common properties. And the only way something could be done with that is through the township. With the closing of some of the lakes in the state, we're very fortunate, White Metal Lake, we work very hard with consultants and applicators to keep the lake healthy. But I just read today that the Morris County Board of Freeholders, with the Assemblyman Anthony Buco, has authorized expanded street sweeping and storm drain inspections and cleaning projects on county roads around Lake Apakan. The county already has a program, I know Rockaway Township does also. The storm drain in front of my house, I know, is up above the pipe that flows to the next one. I know we have a, a large storm basin at Beach Two, at the end of where my storm drains exit to. We got a grant for about 12 years ago. We worked with the township to have that installed. So I know all the silk goes to that. But not all the storm drains in White Metal Lake go through something like that. It's only the ones that kind of on the Beach Two side. But it's very important that those storm drains are cleaned and the streets are swept. I know they sweep them after the winter for the road grit, but with many areas not having berms when it rains, if you drive around White Metal Lake, there's gravel and road dirt and everything else, grass clippings and leaves that get washed into the lake. And those are the kind of things that contribute to the situation Lake Apakan had. We're fortunate that we don't have septic systems because that's a big contributor. But still, the road debris and the storm drains not getting cleaned on a regular basis, it's a big contributing factor. Lastly, I, I would, if I was the clerk, you would have a lawsuit for hostile work environment. So I think something should be done to put somebody in that position. Who do I listen to? Do I listen to the attorney, the mayor, the council president? I don't know if she knows who she's supposed to listen to, or she's supposed to make her own decision and what ramifications is going to be for that. But to put somebody in that situation, the previous clerk walked out crying, this clerk has walked out crying. I mean, if that's the kind of work environment we want to have, I, I would think you're going to have a lawsuit. Because it's on YouTube, and there's a lawyer out there who would say, "You know what? I have nothing else to do tomorrow, let me file something. Or talk to this poor girl." That's what's coming.
Right, so.
All right, next to sign in, thank you. Regina? All right, she left. Pat Dagan. Thank you, Pat.
Pat Dagan in 88 Valley View Drive. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Manny Freelander for, um, getting the debris along the side of the road cut down for us, especially on Valley View Drive. Uh, I was beginning, I'm very claustrophobic, so I was beginning to feel like it was closing in on my street. And I spoke to him, and the next day it was done. So I want to thank him and the township workers who took care of that. Um, you know, going to our council ward representative is, is a good way of getting things done in this township. Um, especially when you have somebody like Manny representing your, your district. Another thing, I'd like to invite all the candidates who are running for public office to a candidate's night on Monday, October the 7th. Um, we didn't know if we were going to have another candidate's night, uh, but the committee decided that they thought it was a good idea. So you'll, uh, anyone that's running will be getting invitations. Uh, if you don't get an invitation and you are running, please contact me because I guess I'm in charge of this one again. The other thing is, a number of times I've come up here and I've criticized our clerk. But today, I feel ashamed of what happened to that young lady today. Uh, I think the way she was treated today was horrendous. And I've been told for years and years that when there's more than four council people together, it's considered a meeting. So I don't know what all the to-do was about this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. DiO, last to sign.
Patrick DiO, 11 Valley Road. I'm a little dismayed at the, what's happened here today. I can't believe that such actions has been taken by this council. For the first part, the, uh, with respect to the township clerk, 2.65 says that the township clerk is appointed for a three-year term. The township clerk was in attendance. I can't believe that this attorney said that the, that this council has the authority to appoint an acting clerk when the township clerk who's hired for three years is, uh, is in attendance. And I am, I'm, I'm dis-- I'm disappointed that the, uh, all of a sudden we have a new block of five. The other thing I'd like to say is with respect to the attorney. 2.63 says that the, uh, the mayor will appoint an attorney. When I looked at the agenda, the agenda is recommending a law firm as the township attorney. I don't understand how that is possible when the ordinance that you people have and are supposed to adhere to clearly says that the mayor will appoint an attorney. This is, this was a law firm that you just did. Setting that aside, I'm also very concerned about the conduct of the council today, or this evening. With respect to, well, regardless whether it's a legal meeting or not a legal meeting, there were some items on the agenda, five items on the agenda, in my opinion, had to do with very significant future operations of this town. I didn't hear one council member discussing the introduction of those three ordinances. I didn't see any publication to the public. We saw proposal. I didn't see anything that said, "Here's what we're, here's what we have, here's what we're proposing, and why we want to change it." There was no such discussion. And I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's fair to the, to the public. Same thing with the resolutions. The resolutions were put forward, right? No discussion as to why, all of a sudden, there's changes being made that financially impact on our town. That one resolution is authorizing this council to spend $2.5 million. Why? I mean, $400,000 for an attorney. $150,000 for some engineer, right? And all of those amounts are in excess of what was put into the budget. So why we have a resolution like that? Again, no discussions. Now, you can go ahead and do what you want to do, but I think we deserve to have discussion when you're making resolutions and you're introducing ordinance changes that have such significant impact on the future operations of this township. And as far as this meeting is concerned, whether it's legal or illegal, I just don't understand. And I looked at the ordinance, I'm an attorney, but the ordinance says that the mayor can call a special meeting upon receipt of written notification or request by at least five members of the council. So I'm asking, did five members of the council provide the attorney with a written request to hold this meeting?